...for each person will have three minutes. I suggest that you use your three minutes to make your comments and ask us questions. You have a question you want us to answer while you're speaking, the clock won't stop. It'll leave that for your three minutes. So you'd be well served going to use your time to make those comments, questions. And then we'll see you in a little rest of questions and comments as appropriate. The time will be shown on the screen. And we'll count down. Again, please let each person speak and not interfere with them speaking and interfere with us hearing what they have to say. Direct your questions here. And just a reminder, this is being watched or you can all be posted on the... So with that said, we'll go ahead and move to the first person.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have 20 signed up for tonight. Dale Hewie.
If you would, come up here, give us your name and where you live.
Goodness, Chairman, thank you, gentlemen. My name is Dale Hewie, I'm from Wood Station. I also have a commercial property in Iowa. Uh, Iowa, the rest of the area.
If you need to go in the crosstalk microphone, we might be able to hear you.
Okay. My name is Dale Hewie, I live in Wood Station. I am a fellow commercial property owner in this county. I am adamantly opposed to any type of property tax increase. It seems to me, from what we have seen in the witness tonight, that the state here grants are mandating a lot of these costs. It's been for a year and four hundred. And the superintendent of our administration board, Mr. O'Loch, said, "Take off." And I stand alone in these schools, for the board of these schools, for the citizens of this county, all these schools. But with that being said, I will give up my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, I go to Atlanta every year and meet with our reps, but your horn is right here. I took a busload of kids this last time because you get a lot more attention when you take the busload of kids. I want you to go with me next time.
Tell me the date.
I will get it for you. I will. I'll take you with me.
I won't piss you off.
Thank you.
I'll be on the phone to our senator tomorrow morning.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Mr. Stockburner?
I think I should say, my name is Mr. Stockburner, I live in the Blackstock community. I lived here my whole life. Graduated from here also nine, ten days ago, that's where family members and teachers, basketball coaches, I did probably no part. I had a lot of a siege life that worked back to get a little bit of school. I'm out of office in our spare time so, and eventually. Not a lot I can complain about as far as the tax breaks go. I can't complain to you guys about how they set my property. I can't do that, tell the military to set. That's a whole different nonsense. But what I can say is this is not a problem, but it's happened in a year. This is a problem that has happened over the last thirty-five years since I graduated high school. We allowed this county to become a bedroom county. And when we built all these houses, and between these five, well, not particularly these five, but there's five people been here, and there's five people on the other side of that street over there that control the businesses. And they have allowed these people to build apartments, houses, subdivisions. And everyone of you guys know that if there's one house that pays, what was it, averaged at twenty-six hundred dollars a year in property taxes, is that correct? Alright? How much does it cost to send thirty kids to school? A lot already, right? Okay, so we went backwards. So what I can tell you is, is we need to quit building houses, and we need to start building businesses. That we need to have the office. And I can only criticize about what a teacher makes, because I think they're underpaid for whatever, but I think Hollywood, there's no end to it. But if that list there, three slides back, I think it said, what are the considerations of cost taxes? Not one of those on that list was administration. Not one. Not one. It was nurses, paratroops, y'all helped me out. I worked through everything, whatever. It was certified people, isn't that correct?
No, there were some others, but...
There were some others. But was there any administration?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got to say.
If they leave, the teachers will leave. If they leave, the teachers will leave.
Well, when I went to school, we didn't have three vice principals. We didn't have three vice principals, we had one. Okay? We didn't have paratroops in the school. And don't get me wrong, they, you know, we probably need some of those. We didn't have school bus monitors. You know why? Because we had a bus driver that had a stick. That would be on the front of that school bus, even though it was Daniels County property. We sat down in our seats and we listened. So this is also a people problem, is what it is. Thank you.
Christine Lawson?
Christine Lawson, District Four. And I'm gonna start with OCA 2249, which was cited by Superintendent Nix. But I want to cite a different portion of it. And specifically, it talks about the role of few individuals who are in front of us or school board. It says, "Your focus should be on the singular objective of ensuring each student and the local school system receives a quality-based education." Now, we also have another statute that talks about what we look at, and what is a quality-based education. And I have a statute that I'll leave with you, but it really focuses on making sure our kids test well, that they learn, that our school systems are efficient and effective, our school programs are proficient and effective. And I'm very concerned that they're not. I have an ongoing news report and pulled up numbers about how our kids are doing. They're pretty similar to what Superintendent Nix put up. In our elementary schools, thirty-nine percent of our kids just aren't proficient in reading and math. Thirty-nine percent. In middle school, forty-four percent are proficient in reading, thirty-four percent are proficient in math. And in the high school, it's forty-two percent proficient in reading, thirty-seven percent proficient in math. I think we need to refocus, because I don't think we're ensuring that all any basic education with the bats in majority of our students. And so what I'm gonna suggest to you, I have listened to podcasts, and I have a couple of the board members, I have listened to podcasts done by Superintendent Nix, and also by Superintendent Corr, that with Mr. Carr, so I tried to educate myself on this meeting this morning. And what I heard at the meeting is most of our coffs that are unfunded are coming from these classified employees. Classified means, that's what the state has said, we don't deem these books really necessary for rehabilitation or education. It's what our county has decided that they want to have. And in fact, this morning, Superintendent Nix said, "When we start talking about the classified employees, that's when you get into the big money." And so I think we need to look very hard at the classified employees. When we talk about the military, we can't go below fourteen percent because we don't want to lose our funding. But you could roll back to fourteen percent, or fourteen mil. You could roll back to fourteen mil. And if I understand correctly, if a mil is worth two and a half, about two and a half million, one point oh five or oh four mil would be about two point six million. That is totally doable for our school board to cut and to refocus. We had people this morning at the meeting who talked about losing their homes over these increases. We need to refocus. Thank you.
Just a quick comment to the previous speaker, Mr. Stockburner. You're right about the development that's going on, but we don't control that. You probably already know that, and you mentioned we're going across the street to the commissioners. And that's where, that's where building for our maintenance and those kind of things lie. We don't control that.
Do y'all have a line of communication with each other?
Yes.
I think so. Okay. Then my point is, between you five that are there, and the five over there, if y'all don't have that line of communication, and some of y'all say, "Listen, we can't keep building these houses, because all we're doing is putting people in them that we're having to send to these schools." And we're having, the landowners, us, not one, and I'm sorry if I offend anyone in here, but people that are in apartments, do they pay property taxes? Okay? If you live, and I've lived in one, my ten years of my life, a modular, or a mobile home, do you pay property taxes? No, you do not. I know that, because I did not. There are, there are folks, and we have to come up with some other means of coming up with funds.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to hear that. This lady that was just here, Georgia Milestones, is apparently a very stringent testing. You look at the scores throughout the state, and we do as well as anybody, even though those numbers are low. If you look at our high school graduates, how well they do in college and in professions, they do exceptionally well. So I think, in my mind, that means that those test scores are for very stringent testing and test procedure. So, anyway, just we'll go to the next speaker.
Amy Ketchon?
Hello, Board and Chairman. Let me first say that I'm putting myself out of my comfort zone, because I think my family and my kids deserve that and need that. So, my name is Amy Ketchon. I live in District Two. A little about my family. We purchased a home here long before we were even expecting our first child, because we wanted our children in the schools here. So we have been doing our due diligence. We haven't come up for generations, but we came here and solved this out. However, this increase will greatly affect our family. You said costs in the schools have gone up? Yes, our costs have gone up. And just because they've gone up doesn't mean that we can come up with the money. Very, very blatantly to say that. So, a couple of things that I wanna just kinda leave you with. Rudimentary, with all of the numbers that I saw presented, it still doesn't make sense in my mind that with both the income and expenses, what our budget need, some of that shortfall isn't made up in the seventy-nine million more coming in from new properties. There seems to be quite an amount of money coming in from the new properties that have been added. Also, we talked about the increase in expenses for insurance for our staff. Have we gone to the state and asked them for different offerings? Now, I realize that you can't shop for different Blue Cross or Anthem or whatever, but have we gone to them and said, "This isn't sufficient for our community." In fact, the insurance we provide for educators here, they can't even use a lot of it and be in network here in the county. They have to go spend their money in Hamilton County to be covered in network. So we're paying more money for something they can't even use here. I also see very convincing evidence right outside my door that there are Hamilton County residents bringing their kids here, and I would like to propose that we find a better or a different way for verifying residency. I realize my time is almost up. I guess I will leave it at that.
Get a hold of them, step out. Yeah, I think he'll be right back. We'll go to the next person to come back.
Melinda Holley?
My name is Melinda Holley, and I live in Wood Station. My first of point of concern is, I appreciate the nice representation you put together, but all of this would have been provided online or on T V for us to review ahead of the meetings, and to be more prepared at such a time when we come here tonight. Also, I noticed on none of the graphs did it show Cherokee or Forsyth County. I currently have my home for sale, and was amazed when I started shopping and found out that a home that cost a hundred thousand more than mine, the taxes for the senior was four hundred and thirty-five dollars a year. Something's wrong with Denmark. These taxes not only penalize us, it affects our property sales. When people are looking at what they're costing taxes. So we can get a double wage. And I'm just hoping that in the future, you'll look, maybe contact Cherokee County and Forsyth County and see what they're doing, because they're doing something right. They not only give those to the sales seniors, it starts at sixty-two, not seventy-five. And if you're only limited to getting them, believe me, and having your property taxes by third, by two-thirds is worth considering.
I would have used Janne my entire life. Went to school here. Went, I lived here my entire life, went to school here, and educated here. And one thing I've learned about education, I know everybody thinks it's going money, that you create the scores, you heard a lot about, good to this kind of scores here. But I'm gonna tell you guys something, and in fact, the reason the scores are high in this county, there's none, y'all have good teachers. Administration. But it has to do with the parents. We have parents, we have hundreds and hundreds of beautiful homes, wonderful parents, ready children, good homes. That's the reason the kids stay. We want a nice place to live, too. We do not want to get ready across the coals, and go all this junk. I don't know who is trying to convince those numbers, you or us. If it convinces you guys, I've lost a lot of confidence in this board tonight, I promise you that. If it convinces anything, because you can throw money at any problem, but the education is not because of you guys doing these one of them credible things that you think will make this county a school system one of these. It's the parents that have done that. It is that the kids we raised, both of my kids went to this county school. Now, they have kids in elementary school here, and they're gonna be good students too, because number one, if they don't, they're getting their butts canned, just like my children did. I believe you guys are doing, you guys did do it, I'm straight, but they got it twice. And I got, I went to school in this very building, this very building, and Mr. Chris was the principal here, and he had referred me there a couple times, just straightened me up. And my parents thanked me for it. What are these more normal things going on in this town, not this kind of stuff? The fastest daughter that's on that screen. The people, the people at the state that make the laws he kept talking about, we need to vote every one of them out. They're incompetent. They're terrible. And if you're being quite honest, if this moves you out, and needs to convince you all of this, you all need to vote that. You're, no one, this kind of money? And it's the formulas that calls the formula, that's causing all this expense. They mandated, since state reps, since state senators that are competent down there, change the laws to something normal. Then you guys didn't hide behind it. That's all you did, is hiding behind the law. Those guys made, they go up here and blame it on, blame it on them, but they say, "Can't do anything about it. Can't get out of the bidding." Okay, fine, maybe not. Send you people down there, we need to replace all of you first. We need to play. And then, and if you, I guarantee you, if you call charter schools up, you guys can come to the end. Tell me, tell me, depending on your benefits, your pension. I got a pension, but a little one, in a police department. But I haven't put in my own IRA, and there's another IRA, because my home retired broke. The point of me is, no one's doing it for me. I decided, what kind of retirement I wanna have? Retire with a police department. And we can also, if we can also do those changes.
Mr. Holley, your time is up. I believe we can do a little police.
Yeah, I can conclude, if normal citizens can see through this and do things for themselves, we don't need you guys all to do this.
This is with the time, yeah, there's five of us, we have one of each, and there's a lot of people in this county, and it's a greater history. So, I mean, we reach out to a lot of other folks who want to make those changes in town. And, I mean, we understand what you're saying, but again, it is only five of us, just to make some down here, we have all the representatives, and try to explain the situation we're in.
Pauline?
Woo! And Paul, yeah, there are three of us, uh, you remember this one? I'm a three-year veteran, I was a rank back. So, you know, that's a good representation, I'm gonna be going to sell a TV to my best man. I mean, that's pretty good. That was very, but let's talk about it, this budget is ridiculous. I mean, y'all get eighty-four percent of our property tax money spent on the schools, when the rest of the county, the food and share department gets sixteen percent to pay everything. I mean, that's ridiculous. We already got this certain amount of year, well, we only got a little more than y'all getting from property taxes last year. Somebody needs to get this money back. I mean, matter of fact, let's look at it, we saw how much the teachers told they were getting, or whatever, let's see. And I'm not trying to attack anybody personally here, I'm just trying to bring in fact, Minister Nix, your two thousand twenty-three thirty was one hundred and eighty-four thousand, that was a TV seven thousand more than two thousand twenty-two. That was ridiculous. Sixteen thousand, we said, that is over a hundred and ninety thousand at Louisville and Chicago, that's a city. We got finance goals of a hundred and eighteen thousand, and instructional supervisors, for them, from a hundred and fourteen thousand to a hundred and sixteen thousand, and then a search head, director, a hundred and fourteen thousand, a hundred and thirteen thousand, one point two million dollars just for them ten people. I mean, that's just half of that right there. That's a good cut, you know? And then, I'm not spending, we're talking about that property barrel we were investing in one mile, nine hundred thousand dollars on those trucks, and it wasn't needed. Future development, hey, I'll tell you what, when it comes to future development, what are you gonna do then, buy another piece of our, people's school cell for you? That's, that's property that not, either can be, make up the debt or richer. They got, they paid four hundred thousand in court, and y'all got to almost sign a hundred. I mean, this is ridiculous, not about the signing, they're not giving you a high school. Well, they have almost a hundred thousand dollars for a sign. I mean, we're spending the money, when I was a kid, you know, you didn't need a principal in every grade, or six principal. And if people learn, schools started after Labor Day, to save hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, right now, it's all, it's like, we're just waiting here, coming, you imagine how much electricity you're gonna be sending? This is about, you get in schools and offices, especially what we have in Labor Day. I mean, I need to have the training, I'm gonna be at the career center, did we get the career center? I mean, come on, no one questions school, they have one, and nobody even trying to promote, promote that. I'm gonna be, but the thing with it is, there's too much money being wasted. We're taxed to that, there are people here that don't make a third of the pay raises, that y'all get, and that we're in here, and they can't go on paying for it. I mean, I think, you five, the senior candidates, senior politicians, maybe some of the teachers that need to try to, I mean, come on, kids can't even sign their name, they're pregnant. When I was a kid, I'm a person, okay? And then others, I mean, they don't cover their border, or federal, or FERB, or whatever they are. I mean, I have a problem with just my school system. And we need to fix that, before we start taking the money. And senior politicians, let's huddle back this, or we might be acting as citizens, and take prisoners.
Speaking of Mr. Nix's salary, that year where it jumped from one twenty-seven to one eighty-four, one twenty-seven years when he was a principal for nine months, and then three months of a superintendent.
April of twenty-two.
And then, the following year, when it jumped to one eighty-four, is when he was a superintendent full-time, and when we compare his mark for what we see in other medium-sized districts in the state, he ranks twenty-fourth out of thirty-one. So, the average, the sort of the median system average is two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Chairman, my name is Melinda Holley, I'm gonna put on several hats today. First of all, I have three married children that go to school in Cudess County. I worked for Cudess County Schools for eight years. The last two years, I worked as a special ed teacher at Lakeview Middle School. I was one of the teachers that was cut. I have no insurance now. I'm almost sixty-one years old. For Cobra, to get Cobra coverage, I was gonna have to pay almost a thousand dollars a month. I have a sister that's dedicated almost thirty years of her life working in Cudess County, her name's Shelley Johnson, a lot of you know who she is. My daughter and her husband live in the county. They own many properties here that are rental, houses. I'm also an attorney guard in the state of Georgia. I think the best thing that... I think the best thing that any of us could have today is a mirror. Take out a mirror, look at yourself, figure out what is my responsibility in this situation? I worked as a substitute teacher in Westside Elementary. I also worked at Graysville Elementary and other schools. There's a tremendous difference in these schools. There are terrible problems. You can have all the signs you want, with all the words you want that sound wonderful, but that's not what's happening. I know teachers whose lives have been threatened. I know custodians who have had to clean feces off the walls in the bathrooms. I know bus drivers that are doing all that they can do to double up on their routes. I know that administrators that are continually abused by parents, verbally abused and threatened. I think it's time, somebody, look at this situation, look at this county, and figure out what is out of order. You are, you are all public servants. And from our federal government here in the United States of America, all the way down to the least of us, we have a responsibility for our children. And I think a lot of the things, especially, I know the teachers have spent all kinds of their money for curriculum, because so much money has been spent on having a Chromebook for every child. But I also know the struggle in trying to get the kids off of sites that they shouldn't be on in a classroom. But I'm gonna do what I can do.
Ariann Kinnell.
It's Adrianne Gill, I live in District Four in Wood Station. And I would like a yes or no answer from each board member, whether you have read and studied the sixty-six page budget that was released several days ago.
Yes.
If you said no? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Kena Wong. Grace McDonald. Yellen Long.
As you said, I think Yellen Long is around here. We never go, just outside this unit, we've been here our whole office, doing the best of this. You said I could make some points that you wanted to add in the three minutes, right? You said I could make some points to do in the next or after the three minutes, right, is that correct? Okay, so, uh, a few things, notice, uh, during the budget, uh, we lacked some expansion on, there was a section that said something to the point of, an education or learning improvement, uh, to, 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 two and a half million dollars. You know, if it's improvement every year, it doesn't take long with a small percentage of improvement to be at a hundred percent. So I don't know how many years we're continuing to improve before we are kinda at the top where we should be. Uh, it's a lot of money. Continuing other points, um, what's the five million savings were, obviously, we're lower than the state says we need to be at. Um, but also, if it's so low, why aren't we making a budget that still increases the deficit for the savings? Because I can promise you, you're not gonna save any more by submitting more, definitely doesn't work in that way. Um, there's a lot of things going on with people's house payments as well, I would say the majority of people in the county, um, definitely have their own retaxes, they always go into their payments. Um, this is gonna be an immediate effect on that as soon as this goes through. I know just a proposition on my home loan was, um, a major amount, um, summed to the term of, just in taxes, only roughly around five hundred dollars a month, which is insane. That being said, you know, if we're saying there is more actual money, um, in the budget with what's happening, you know, then we can drive down the street, we, we see things like major improvements in construction at LFO. Coming from the blue collar side of things, I can tell you that was millions alone. Um, you know, all these four two meals that were adding to the, and it's, you know, pretty, et cetera, but, um, we have recreational areas and stuff across the county that are used for nothing other than outside school activities. And then, you know, where are these auditoriums, we're building wards, if the kids don't have homes to go to, because these parents are over, they're losing their homes. Income alone is numbers that most of us can't even fathom, meaning hundreds of millions, but, um, you know, each home may only have so many kids, and, you know, can only pay so much a year. I do agree with Scott Parker that we need more businesses, but also, you know, we have a ton of homes paying for children when they don't even have children, so, we're collecting that off these houses alone, that we should be able to, you know, spread it around, uh, last two points as I run out of time. Um, you know, the people in our positions of power should definitely be doing it for the benefit of our kids, not for the money. You know, I'm not saying they shouldn't get paid, but a lot of people are getting paid a lot more than us even business owners do. That being said, you know, don't y'all live here too, for more money to our kids here, why aren't we teaching them about what we all wish we knew, like count out, which is, more taxes, mortgages, all this stuff, et cetera, while a lot of us stand here kinda, lost, looking at parents, because we would never talk to them, you know? Thank you.
Excuse me, this lady here was, was fifth on the list, and she never got called. This lady here was-
Deborah Monroe, am I on the list?
She was never called, she was picked on the list.
Yes, ma'am, sorry, we missed you.
I will, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll play my comments if you want it to the end, and then that way you'll help us get along.
My name is Deborah Monroe, I live in the third district, I've been there approximately four years in the inner city. I did not know about property tax that I had to pay for kids to go to school. I have never had a child in a Georgia school, I've never had a grandchild in a Georgia school. And I think we need to have meetings about people on social security, with no spouses especially, that could lose our home. I have lived there three, four years, my insurance, we have some, but the property tax is eating me up. I even asked a man on Facebook today, he said, oh, I'm sorry, you people that can't afford. I said, listen, you got extra bedrooms, right, so I eat, we're gonna lose our homes. That's the kind of meetings we need to have. And I live in subdivision, third district, four buses, four, within an hour, go by my house. I live a second house from fifteen mile an hour corner, twenty mile an hour up the road, they fly, absolutely fly. Four buses, and you're not even a mile of subdivision, okay? For example, that needs to be all good. Why, why? Is there that many buses in a one mile area in a one hour? I have called the superintendent of the buses, in the car, I have his name and phone number. He said, well, about the third call, maybe I need to come out and watch. Well, he asked why, when he stopped, it was the late school stop. So the next meeting we have, it should be about who can afford your taxes.
Hey, do you think that's okay? In the white shirt, Nick. Do you think that's okay, she's gonna lose her house, you cool with that?
He can afford it.
How does that make you feel? Look her in the face and tell her it's okay.
He can.
Her. Look at her and tell her it's okay.
He can.
I'm right here. I'm right here.
I see you, man, thank you. I'm not gonna be ugly.
Good evening, my name is Kristen Elder, and I'm a Cudowsa County resident. I'm also a two thousand eleven graduate from the Cudowsa County Public School System. I graduated from the heritage, but I had the opportunity to attend LFO, our opening of heritage, as well as LMS and HMS. I went to Wayne secondary to February, and battlefield paper one, was my kindergarten teacher. Across my thirteen years in the school system, I attended six of our schools. I have several family members who are teachers in our community, one of which is a very well-known special education teacher. I was proud to attend a school in my heritage. I spent many lunch periods chatting with Officer Nixon, who I knew through my dad. I even spent some time in trouble in the office, we give it the SRO, like you. Uh, I won't argue the merit of people who better my life during those years. But today, I'm here at the homeschool home, as someone who has made countless sacrifices to have the opportunity to give my kids a middle-class education. I'm a registered nurse, I previously worked in heart surgery at Memorial Hospital, and in two thousand twenty, I made the decision to stay home and do what we thought was best for our children. We built a home that same year, and did so at the top of our budget, knowing that this was our forever home, because we built on family land. Over the course of the last four years, our housing has continued to rise, and this increase would put us at a three hundred dollar a month increase. In a time when inflation is the worst it's been since the nineteen eighties, and everyone is having to trim the fat, we could do with less discretionary spending. And unfortunately, for my family, this may be the last one. We may have to sacrifice what we feel is best for our family, or move away from our family land. And in response to Mr. Nixon's quote about the specialized nature of the word of education, I would like to remind you that the quote still says, you represent constituent views, and the tax living body is responsible to the taxpayer. Georgia lawmakers have stated that discontent over rising property tax bills is a tall concern that adheres from constituents, and limiting that increase will be dealt with in November. I for one, do not want increased property taxes based on an inflationary home value increase. Additionally, the same Georgia quote, code you quoted also sends your pressing of public funds. And your objective is to make sure every student receives a quality-based education. This may not be what you want here, but things like the land urges, of which you have mainly rationalized, are frivolous spending, and a misuse of taxpayer funds when we're already in a rut. It's not the state funds, it's not the local government's funds, it is the people's funds. I'd like them all to be rolled back, or harshly rolled back to the military. And also, did you read the sixty-six page document between this morning and this one? Okay, I just wanna make sure, because that's after that three-hour meeting this morning, you said you had read, so, just wanted to, wanted to bear-
Hi, Red Rose.
Some children are right, while the governor's here, communications, when you talk to those guys over there, they'll tell you, there is no communication from you guys. Now, I'm not saying they're always, I'm just saying that that's what's been told, and I didn't see one person here saying, yes, we meet with them regularly to try to handle this. You're, you're rolling, but you put on very good, but you stopped short. You said, what kind of schools do we want? But you should have finished that, and said, what kind of schools can we afford? Only to see that the entire East of Cudowsa County, over sixty-five, pay school tax. That is like, that's a curse, a curse. I moved here, and I paid Georgia state income tax, and I paid property tax, and I paid school tax, and I'm still paying. I just don't see it. If you guys are serious, the, the state what you made, I, I don't mean to pick you out, but the state what you made was, what kind of schools do we want? But if you have a white check, which you guys send out, you just know you're paying it out. Because we don't have any of these, except come here with your hat in your hand, and say, please, don't do this. And I'm not seeing a soul say we're not willing to do it. But the ministry over there saying, you guys handle one part of it, and we handle the other part. My property tax goes up, and it helps me absolutely, you know? If you say that Georgia decreases the amount of money that they give us because our property tax goes up, that would be annoying, quit the debate. I just don't understand, if I'm gonna sell my house, and you tell me it's worth a million dollars, that's gonna be, but if I wanna live there till I die, don't do that, man. Don't raise it for no reason, because you raise it, and then they raise it, and then Farnero raises it. And then you raise it, they raise it, and Farnero raises it. And I feel like I'm a short-term shit, I appreciate that, but you guys.
Terry Nefer.
Tax the bed, clown. I said that right over here. Tax the bed. Nobody care.
So y'all being grossed out up here, oh, it's hot, too, right? I just got a few things I wanna bring to your attention, and it looks like some people have started doing that in the eighties. There was an age, to a certain point, that some people were saying, you no longer have kids. And, uh, property taxes have been going up every year, my value of my house keeps going up, I'm, I'm happy with that. And I'm sure a lot of other people are, but if you're asking for thirty percent from any group?
It's four.
But what I saw was thirty, that, that's, that's enough, thirty percent, that's a lot. I don't have any kids, I don't got grandkids in school. I don't know how to live in school, I don't, but to increase my property taxes by thirty percent, are we gonna vote on that? Is that gonna do something to the zone for the little children? And most of the voters? And if you vote for it, we don't need to vote.
No choice.
Maybe you should have swapped the pact with all the departments that we do, where everybody's paying for. And instead of increasing the tax on us, the cost of bill goes up, the tax keeps going up every month, but it just combined with thirty percent on the board. That's a lot for somebody that don't have any kids at school. And they're targeting each other. If you're on your cover, we're talking about a three-page, I believe, I know, we increased the number of property taxes by forty percent. All the ones who didn't pay for that.
The house hasn't changed enough.
I don't give a damn. Thank you.
Kayla, we can't read your last name. I apologize. We're second to the last to sign that. Hold up, maybe? Kayla? Okay, Erin Kribble.
All right, I'm ready to bear with me because I ran into her last year, so I need to sometime to gather my thoughts. My name is Aaron. I'm a Cootes County resident, one of the eighties. I'm a graduate of LFO 2011. I was superintendent of the ASRO. I went to Hallmark first house, March eighteenth this year. And because of inflation and interest rate, I paid off four, about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand on a six-point-six percent rate, which was the best you could. That's pretty wild. There's a lot of people here who look to some various, five, six years ago, you could owe my house around one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. I got paid two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars this year. That doesn't even get you a kid in home or anything else. I've got three kids, all boys, including two female today. Everybody blows another path to school, gas, insurance. I'm barely even making it. I have four jobs. One of my jobs pays me seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. My other three part-time job is a substitute teacher for Cootes County. I'm a daughter, and I require time in GNC. My wife also makes thirty K. And I work all these jobs, not to have extra money, but just to get by. But that's pretty rough. Another thing, Cootes County subs, last year, seventy dollars a day, which is like second to the lowest in the state of Georgia, but just red where it's seventy-five dollars now. That's wild. That's definitely, that's huge. Five hundred dollars per semester, that's great. Everybody here, if somebody or themselves are struggling to get off, what do you think the thirty percent property tax increase is gonna do to them? My uncle owns forty-seven acres in Chicago. That's Cootes County. His kids go to Walker County. He's got five different plots, which means it's five different bills. It's getting to a point where our home and land isn't even worth it anymore, which was once an American dream. All property taxes have averaged twelve-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars a year for the last eleven years, which is the highest it's ever been in Cootes County history. If you raise it thirty percent, it's gonna go to over sixteen hundred, which will be significantly higher than it's ever been in Cootes County history. And that'll go for every other house that are in here. The legal reason for this question, increase property tax, honestly, is a spending problem on your behalf. Thirty percent is way above the costs of living increases. Taxpayers live within a budget, so should the county. Incorporating the thirty percent property tax increase, not only am I gonna make my house payment go up significantly more, I mean, I can barely afford it now. I pay nineteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month for a two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollar house. Six years ago, that would have been a full hundred a month. About one hundred, it's one of over a hundred fifty dollars a month as well, with no accidents, no tickets, no claims of credit. It costs over two hundred dollars a week to feed my family. It costs another two hundred dollars a week in gas. Raising property taxes is, it's not the answer. It's definitely gotta be fixed within your budget. If you look at that sixty-six page thing that everybody keeps talking about, I spent four hours reading it earlier. Just the rebuild high school principal and the assistant principals make four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars this year. That's almost triple any other school in the whole entire county. The principal paid more than the superintendent next year. I never rebuilt out. Two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars unless they had two principals. That wouldn't make sense, because it's on that sixty-six page budget that everybody else in here has seen. And they do.
As you said, I'm Michael Dickens. Yeah. I graduated from Boston in nineteen-seventy. I did have three kids and eight grandkids going through Cootes County. I just came here to kind of echo what...
Debbie Malone, is that it? Name's Deborah Malone.
I want to speak to the people who have retired, but haven't reached seventy-six yet. And I feel the same way a lot of these people do, that there should be some exemption or some reduction or some cutoff where you don't charge us our own fixed incomes. And mine's not. I saw that my guys, pretty guys, talking about so many salaries. And I thought, wow, I make one cent for what a lot of you guys do in my retirement. So, it's kind of tough. When you make two-hundred thousand, you have a thousand dollars a year. I don't know what you guys make. And you have a two-thousand square foot house. Thirty percent may not affect you, but if you have a fourteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot house and you get a thirty percent increase, that's quite a hit. So, what I'm asking you guys to do is to seriously consider, as people who are going to retirement, even if it's stepped up from sixty-five up to seventy, twenty percent for a year or something like that, reduce our taxes for the fixed income folks. And I think you would echo what I said. So, I just kind of make that request. Give the retirees a fair shake here. And I do feel sorry for a lot of the stories I've heard. The kids, this fight, struggling guys, know that everybody's facing inflation. You know everybody's got increase in insurance, increase in medical. I think this year we're expecting Medicare pay raise or Medicaid or social security pay raise, but they're expecting everybody to get higher even Medicare costs, which is gonna lower than what they're coming in. So, I don't know how you guys are gonna help us out. That's my request. Guys, look at each other and make sure that we do some type of great care.
All right, Mr. Nick, do you want to respond to any of these?
This thing, one thing is probably clear to make sure is that folks know that you guys are under control property values. You don't say. I just think that's very important by the way. You guys do not establish your property values, because I'm not sure that's very clear within the place.
Yeah, that's why we're here. You know, we're...
I got a rental property.
Good luck, dear. Tell us who you are.
Okay, sure.
You live here?
I'm a retired veteran. My name is Larry Lins. I've got a rental property in Fort Everland, real tree, very sick of having it. The taxpayers will get two and a half months of my rent money every month if this goes up. You not talking to me like that?
Do they make the repairs for you?
Oh, yeah. Nearest.
May I, may I speak?
Where is?
In Aquar Island District Board. So, I watched the video this morning. My wife and I can record. And once again, very appreciative of this board when you started doing the video recording yourself. We've been doing this for the county. We did a lot of meetings that don't get that coverage of transparency and so that camera. And everything is very important. And so, the people behind me, they have you to do. You can see these slides. You can share the information, and that I'm very grateful for. I was here last year. It's my first time kind of really getting into the budget. I had some questions. I had a chance and Melissa, and got things that seemed to be in an order of being able to deliver because I was totally blown away after studying the budget for the county and receiving over a hundred and sixty pages that I would go through every vacation, Christmas vacation, and just come through. It sounds boring, doesn't it? But I did that so that then I can make sure that I was keeping my government accountable. This board is elected to keep them accountable. But what really, once again, tears me up is to hear what you said this morning, Mr. Doc, is that you haven't received or read the information of the sixty-seven page budget proposal, in which I don't know if any of you got it prior to it being sent out after an open records request. That's what tears me up, is that we elect all five of you to do what the burden of being put on a citizen like myself and my wife and the research time that the public puts into it, you're supposed to be the one carrying that torch. So, I'm going to ask you a question when I come back this week, next Tuesday. I'm gonna ask you a question that you can study it on. This is the school board. So, you've got a weekend to study that document, and I want to know, out of those sixty-seven odd pages, what line items stand out to you the most? This gentleman had mentioned one himself that I've seen, and I want to know what stands out to you. Now, Austin, if there was something that you need to correct now in between next Tuesday or possibly Friday, so that they can have some time to review over the weekend, and that I get that as well to review and correct the documents that I marked up, then Austin and I ask that you do that for this board, because they need to see the style of budgeting that I'm seeing. Thank you.
Amen.
Okay, so, I concluded everybody's comments, questions. Take your time. We will pick these comments as always. Those will continue these, and we'll be forward and make a final decision about what the beginning of the year should be. So, thank you for being here. We will adjourn. I'll ask our motion adjourned in just a minute, and we have our regular on the board meeting after this. So, every fifteen minutes now, we will come back and we'll have our regular on the board meeting. And if you need comments or anything, and that, we're mostly adjourned.